We'll call the meeting in order, please. Everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Krapp.
Here.
Menczer.
Here.
Voorhees.
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Let's see, we don't have any announcements at this time?
We have none.
Does anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move on. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mayor Krapp, I move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menczer.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting where we invite the public, both in person and on Zoom, to participate. Sorry, to address the commission. All that we ask is that you approach the microphone, give us your full name and your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. If you would like to address the commission, we invite you to come to the microphone at this time.
Good evening. Diana Avenue 26 Riverside Drive. This weekend, I had the pleasure of attending, as a vendor, the Juneteenth celebration at the Cairns Center. I found it to be informative, and I found it to be very uplifting. I saw everybody there in spirit, a lot of love, everybody was helping each other. We had free clothes for people, we had vendors there, we were talking about home ownership, we were talking about history. There was just a lot of very positive things happening in the community at the Cairns Community Center. I also would like to acknowledge that the people were very thankful that the center was open for them, and more than once, they were thanking Tommy Barnes when he came in for allowing the center to be open so that they could hold this very important community celebration. I'm already signed up to be next year as a vendor. They've asked me back, and I cannot think of a more positive, uplifting thing to be happening in that corner of town. That is what the community center was designed for, and I want to acknowledge Councilperson Voorhees and Councilperson Menczer for coming and supporting the event and talking and watching some of the presentations that were taking place and speaking with the vendors and other attendees. So I just wanted to thank you for allowing the community center to be used for what it is meant for, and I'm looking forward to more events there. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Eric Rick, 1689 Hampton Road, Mount Clemens. I'd just like to say to Mr. Johnson, thank you for working for us for the time you did. Thanks for your time and your effort. Best of luck on whatever's next.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person who would like to address the commission? Okay, anybody on Zoom? Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and go back to the agenda here. Moving on to general business. I'm sorry, we'll go to approval of minutes first. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the work session and regular city commission meeting minutes for June 6, 2022.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menczer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Now, we'll move on to general business. 9A Rental Inspector Contract. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the six-month agreement with Michael L. Farron to provide rental inspection services and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
I'm going to call on Mr. Tingley to present his report.
Thank you. The report is basically identical to two weeks ago, outside this being a six-month contract. So once approved, we would begin the process of updating the position description for a full-time rental inspector, and after finalizing that, we would advertise and fill the position. Again, it's a six-month agreement, there still is a 30-day termination clause by either party, and then we would need to make the appropriate budget adjustments at some point to reflect that, going from a contract position to a city employee.
Okay, who has questions, comments?
In terms of the rental inspections, is there any plan around that? I mean, is it just that you're going to hire a full-time rental inspector, or what is the plan going forward? Because that's what we said last time, it may not just be Michael Farron as an issue. It's just, how do we get this done and more efficient?
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things. Obviously, it is a manpower issue. You know, it is, you know, basically, I have one contracted position, which I don't consider full-time, managing the entire program, scheduling, doing inspections, answering phone calls, all of that. So I think that it will help bring that back in as a full-time position. And then, going back to some of the things in the strategic plan, looking at administrative hearings bureau or something similar, civil infractions potentially, for not only rental but light, combination of those.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please.
Fournier?
No.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menczer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda 9B, approve placement of special assessments for delinquent utility and general billings on the tax roll. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Mount Clemens City Commission approve the special assessment roll.
Yeah.
Special assessment rolls.
Yep.
22-02 and 2203 for delinquent billings and placement on the city summer tax roll for 2022.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Again, I'll call on Mr. Mason to present his report.
Now, this, this is a move that council makes.
Can you go to the microphone so that they can hear you on?
Now, this is a motion that council will approve for every year. We basically try to, at this time, we take a look, and any delinquents under six months will go over to the tax roll, particularly on water fund, we take a very close look. But mostly, the unpaid bills at this time have been in excess of six months, so at that time, we put them, you know, we recommend the State Commission put them on the bill. And the rest of the bills, very similar, we look at them, staff reviews them, to say at this time, we've tried reasonable means to collect the bills, and this is probably the best method to do it this time. So, like you said, this is very consistent with what's been done with previous years.
Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Menczer?
So I was disappointed to see some of the downtown maintenance things on here, but I was puzzled by false alarms for the fire department. 1000 Harrington, which we know is the hospital, has a fourth alarm, a seventh alarm, and an eighth alarm on here. I just wondered what happened to the fifth and sixth? Were those paid? And they skipped the fourth and seventh and eighth?
That would be my guess, yes.
Okay. This is a little weird. On the sidewalks, there, we have 78,000 in sidewalks here. Are these people who have not paid since the beginning of the sidewalk program?
I wouldn't say the beginning at this time, because the beginning now has been, what, 18 months, I believe? So I don't think we were going back 18 months. I'd have to answer your question specifically, Commissioner. I'd have to go exactly, see where it is. 18 months would be a little bit too long at this time.
Yeah, because, I mean, there's quite a few here that's, what, almost three full pages of, you know, failure to pay. So it's a little concerning if there is a reason that they haven't paid. Is there a hardship? Are these people getting the notices, you know, timely? Because we've had complaints that that hasn't happened in the past.
Well, it hasn't come back to my office specifically that people have a hard time. There are, one, I don't handle the bills, I don't want to pass off, I don't handle the specific complaints, but I've had none of the staff come back to me and say, Mr. Mason, we do have an issue here, you want to take a look at it? If anything in particular, I'd go back and talk it over with Donna or with Mr. Wood on it. But no, I haven't had any of those. I think, in fact, we are pretty diligent trying to get two or three monitors out to people, and if there are issues, if there are issues down in the Treasury's, Deputy Treasury's office, they do a good job working with people. So I don't think, I don't think it's anything complicated, it just, you know, we put a lot of bills out, remember, we're running two programs? And, you know, the staff, you know, Kathy, Kelly, Lynn is my office, Field, other girls, this is a, Teresa Gray works, this has been a big job for them because we've been running double programs. So, in fact, that's why, in fact, that's why the number is probably as high as what you see.
Yeah, because that's pretty darn high. And I just had a question about the weed cutting. I'm looking at one house that's particular, that's listed on this thing, one, two, three, four, five times. So is that house then vacant, or it's just somebody that's not cutting their lawn?
What, could you help me on that?
110 Chipola?
I do not believe that house is vacant. It's not vacant, it's just somebody who doesn't take care of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, can I have one other question? Mr. Mason, do you, for these people on the sidewalk program, they know that there's a payment plan that they can use?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I believe that's also on the website, I mean, I think that's pretty well, you can use the words, advertise out there, yeah, there's notices, absolutely.
Thanks.
Some of them do like it on the, if they have their taxes in escrow, they like to make the payment that way through their escrow payment, which is like, some of the call type, you see it in the paper.
Well, this'll do it, eh?
We'll just catch up to them as soon as there's an escrow analysis.
That's true.
Dempsey?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Dempsey?
Do we have a delinquent report on the parking tickets? You didn't put that in here, but I was just curious, because I know that's been an issue.
No, we can't put parking tickets on the tax bill.
I know you can't, but I was just curious, because we're going through all this delinquent...
You know, this is of last week, I was sitting down with my deputy, we're going through and also Laurie Shipman on this, because, you know, during the COVID period, we saw the number, two things we saw, obviously, we had very, our revenues were cut more than half, and I'm glad to say this time, we've really seen revenues accelerate again. But we did see an increase in delinquents. It is something that probably more likely, I'll have to go ahead and talk with the district court to see, you know, what we can do, and if I can maybe get one of my staff to go down once or twice a month and to work something, maybe with the Secretary of State, and so we can put notices out to the people, let them know that, you know, we have this out there, and we're going to do what we can, because it's a, it's a collectible item to the most part. So it's something we talked about, that now, now it's really a matter of, let's get, let's get a plan in action and try to enhance revenue. This past year, I'm going to be writing off like $17,000, which I really don't want to do, and we really have no way of collecting that money, and that's for 2018. And so, anything really, we say over three years, for the most part, are hard to collect. So it would be something.
So we don't try to collect past due parking tickets?
Oh, no, we send notices out, Laura. I mean, you know, I won't say frequently, but we do send notices out, minus we have no meat. I mean, into the program, unless we can work the program with the Secretary of State, not the easiest to do. You know, I have talked to Mr. Ryan, and to maybe, best thing we can do is go down to the court, have a staff member available, or make one available, and see whether or not we can work something with the court administrator and send notices out, work with the, maybe after a few months, when they go renew their license, maybe at that time they can pay the ticket.
So what happened is, and the statute may have changed, but for many, many years, if you had six or more unpaid parking tickets, you cannot renew your licenses. So that was in, at some point, 10, 12 years ago, the treasurer decided she didn't want to do that, and that she was going to utilize a collection agency. Well, the district court, the only way you can certify the six or more unpaid tickets is through the district court handling your unpaid tickets. Well, they no longer handle it, so you have no hammer. You know, somebody owes 70 bucks, you send them a letter, because you weren't going to send them a letter, and they're going to ignore it anyway. But if you, if you can't renew your license, that used to get everybody's attention, they would go, you know, particularly when the county building and the court building were really active, all kinds of attorneys would have $300, $400, $500 worth of unpaid parking tickets. And when it came time to renew their license, they would charge over to the district court and talk to the judge and, you know, try and reach some agreement on a payment amount. But that's how you collected them, and we don't have that ability. I talked to Jim McGreal, the court administrator, Cliff talked to me about it, and he said he would be willing to sit down and talk about it. The last time this happened, the district court said, no, they weren't interested, because it would require too much personnel time on their part.
There, that I can see is cost effectiveness is, could be an issue, but don't we, do we ever consider towing a car if they've got X number of parking tickets?
We do that.
They do it.
So they, you tow them, and to get their car back, don't they have to pay the ticket?
They do. Is that ticket, Jeff, is that three or six?
I can't remember if it's three, three or six, it might be three, it could be, I can't remember exactly, but we do tow them.
I would guess. There's a threshold of like, not on the first ticket, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I think it's, it's either three or six, or how many ever unpaid, and then we get, they do get sent a notice, and then we have a copy of that notice, and we see that vehicle again.
So just messing it up, that's the problem, you got to see it again.
Well, no, we have, because of the, we have to, we get it in there, so if that license is paid.
Okay. Know of the file, okay.
I was going to say, the main thing is, it's something that we're looking at, I mean, we're addressing it, we see it as out there, you know, as a particular, I want to say, it is an issue to support, because it's a large dollar amount, not six figures, but it's something we see that we know we cannot get down, so it's not ignored.
Just one more question, I know this has been asked before, but all of these delinquent charges, at the end of the year, when you turn all the taxes over to the county?
Yes.
Does the county make us whole for these also?
Yes, they do.
They do?
Plus interest, yes.
Plus interest, okay.
Except in foreclosures.
Except in foreclosures, okay.
Tax foreclosures.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Menczer?
I'm looking at the special assessment rolls for rental registrations, and there are multiple properties here that are listed like three times, rental registration, rental late fee, rental late fee, and then some that are, one of them that just has three months of rental late fees. And when that goes on the tax roll, it's the owner of the home that pays it, correct? And how long do we get, do we let that, you know, this one, you know, home be delinquent repeatedly without like pulling their license or something?
CFO.
Or their CFO, thank you.
Yeah, that, we handle that when, when the, every, every year. I mean, or when they're, when they, when they're due for the rental inspections, it's a two-year cycle.
So if this property here is listed three times, that's three years of late?
No, 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 those are just, no, those are, those are all separate invoices, so they have their initial rental registration fee that went out, and then there were late fees that went on, but they all go out as separate invoices, so we have to separate them out for this report.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not, these are all fees that were due, probably going back to the ones that were due the fall of 2021. So these are not multi-year delinquents. These are all, yeah, very recent.
Okay, I was just confused, because some of them say registration late fee, and some of them just say rental late fee. But, there's no, I got it, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Call the roll, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Menczer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
General Business 9C, budget adjustment.
I move to amend the City of Mount Clemens 2021-22 fiscal year general fund budget in the amount of $130,000 to cover the anticipated overage in the recreation function.
Support.
Is that the right year?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody else have questions?
It was a good report, I liked how you presented this, very good.
I'm very grateful for the higher-than-expected building permits and state revenue, and lower employee insurance, so it's a good thing.
Anyone else? All right, call the roll, please. Call the roll, please. Yes.
Menczer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
All right, moving on to consent.
Move to approve consent as approved, as presented.
Support.
Call the roll, please.
Menczer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
All right, city manager's report, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Mayor and I both attended the ground unbreaking for the new KE Electric project on Grossback, which was held on Thursday. This is the kickoff to signify the beginning of Phase Two of the project. Phase One included securing the site and cleaning up substantial industrial debris, analyzing soil densities and chemical content, and recovering the pre-existing building, which used to be the miniature golf starter shed, so it can be used as a construction headquarters during the other phases of this project. Phase One also included brownfield analysis activities, and these were supported by several government agencies, including the City of Mount Clemens. Phase Two includes balancing the land by relocating soils and constructing a substantial seawall on the east side of the 10-acre lake. Some of you remember when it was a driving range there, along with the miniature golf, used to drive golf balls into that lake. And actually, my first visit to the site, about a year and a half ago, I still found several golf balls, red ones and blue ones and green ones. That seawall will provide substantial support for the building to be constructed in Phase Three. Phase Three is to be the construction of a new warehouse and office building for KE Electric Supply, which has outgrown their existing location directly across the street. The design is still incomplete, but works ongoing. Various facades have been drawn for the proposed building, while the footprint has remained substantially unchanged during the design process. Our cable TV friends are offering to advertise garage sales, yard sales, block sales on cable TV. Macomb Cable Network offers a free sale posting to all Mount Clemens residents. You can find a link in the residence section of the city website. Nonprofit organization may post events or activities on the community calendar, also on cable, and then there's a link for that also under the residence section. Upcoming events, the big ones coming up Friday, June 24th on the riverfront, the Independence Day celebration, this will bring back the riverfront concerts. We're actually going to have four of them this year, the first will be on June 24th, just before the fireworks. Start about 7:30, fireworks will begin at dusk. We do have boat docks available at no charge on a first-come, first-served basis. We do, we are not taking reservations. The Ghostbusters Drive-In movie has been rescheduled for June 25th at dusk at the Roscoff Parking Lot, near the Anton Art Center and across the street from Pop Sweets and Treats. We've got six local clubs expected to participate, and we expect to see the Stay Puft Marshmallow Man again. We have another concert using the percussive instruments at the Cherry Street Mall. First of these was held on May 21st, and approximately 125 people attended. The Uptown Friday Night Concert Series will return to the Fountain Stage at 7:00 PM starting July 8th, be featuring Strictly Fine, a funk and soul party band. These concerts will continue every Friday night through and including September 30th, for a total of 12 weekly concerts. In addition, the DDA will be presenting three more Saturday night riverfront concerts on July 23rd, August 27th, and September 24th. So remember, the Friday night concerts will be at the Fountain Stage, the Saturday night concerts will be on the riverfront. COVID rates are still falling, decreased by 29% from the average two weeks ago, deaths have decreased by 6%. Still go to Macomb County Vaccine Central to schedule a COVID vaccination. Thank you.
Right. This is the second opportunity for the public to address the commission. If you would like to speak, we ask that you give us your full name, and that you come to the microphone and abide by our two-minute rule. We also ask for your address. We'll again ask for everyone in public, and then we'll look to see if we have any friends on Zoom. Is there anyone in person who would like to address the commission?
Diana Avenue 26 Riverside Drive. Commissioner Hammond, if you were there, I'm sorry I didn't see you, they came to the table, so. I also wanted to mention, and I'm really bummed she's not here tonight, but her own little Ms. Ruthie was crowned Juneteenth Queen, Mrs. Juneteenth, and she wore her tiara the whole rest of the day and carried around her bouquet of flowers, and she was just beaming. She is an amazing person who has given a lot to her community, and I just, I was hoping she was going to be here, I asked her to wear her crown, and she came, and she's not. So I just want to thank you, Commissioners, again, that came to support the event, it was a great event, and I can't wait for Friday night, thank you.
Is there anyone else in person who would like to address the commission? Darren, do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Dempsey?
I just want to wish everyone a very safe and happy Fourth of July coming up, and a public announcement, the Crocker House Museum is having their garden walk this Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00. We have six wonderful gardens, and Miller Brothers is giving a discount to all those that are participating, they can pop in and get a treat afterwards. It's $15 for non-members and $12 for members, and of course, we'd love to have you become members. We have a porch walk coming up in August, we have a pottery luncheon coming up in July. We're having some, we're working on some special events for Halloween this year, which will be really different, so come to the Crocker House, look around the gardens, Ross has been working day and night getting the garden ready, so if you have nothing to do this Saturday, stop by. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees?
I would just like to say that the Juneteenth, Juneteenth event at the Cairns Community Center was great. Thank you, Rashida, for putting, putting up with me to that day.
I'm glad you came.
And I also want to thank the realtors who turned around and certainly talked to a number of people and make sure that we have single-family homes that are sold in the City of Mount Clemens, I appreciate that very much. I was saddened to see in the paper the passing of Irene Henry, who is the widow of former Commissioner Harold Henry. Mrs. Henry, of course, owned the United Memorial Funeral Home here in Mount Clemens for a number of years, but she was also probably the most classy lady I have never met. for a number of years, but she was also probably the most classy lady I have never met. Certainly a passionate client. She was a great lady and wonderful to talk to. And with that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensor.
We had a workshop last commission meeting on, at the animal control ordinance. And since then, over the weekend, we had another vicious animal bite. Somebody's hand was mangled over on Meadow Street. So I think that this is a conversation that we need to speed up and get an ordinance for dangerous animals. At the Juneteenth event, I promised Ms. Hamilton that I would announce that the National Council of Negro Women are planning an educational awards banquet for next year. The purpose is to get scholarships for children. So keep in mind, Sunday, May 21st, there will be a banquet and award ceremony. You can get further information by emailing her, and I'll say this slowly. M C A E A B 23 at gmail dot com if you want more information about the scholarship. And I, I think the most fun that I had there was when I attempted to do the hustle. Commissioner Hammond had it down pat. I had to go hide in the back row, and I had to get assistance because this girl can't dance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fournier.
I couldn't come to the Carron's event at Juneteenth because I was at the Art Center volunteering so that Phil could go there. And if I knew you were going to do the hustle, I would have been there. Phil could have stayed at the Art Center. But I just wanted to congratulate Artist Music on their 50th, is that correct? I was surprised when I came out last weekend and the music was playing and it was in celebration of their 50th anniversary. So that's very cool. My kids went there. My grandson went there and attended many concerts at Artists. And I just wish everyone a very safe, happy Fourth. I hope you all adhere to the fireworks rules as they are written. And enjoy the weekend. See you at the fireworks.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you. Very well said about Mrs. Henry. She was a very classy lady, and my condolences to her family. The Juneteenth event, as everyone said, it was awesome. It was an amazing event to see everyone in the community come together with food, entertainment, the honors of the Ms. Ruthie for the Juneteenth, Mrs. Juneteenth 2022. We had representatives from Chesterfield, trustees come out, Clinton Township, all the Mount Clemens community. We thank everyone that came out. And also the National Council of Negro Women, Macomb County Chapter, for hosting the event, along with Malia Howard, Teresa McGarity, the Buffalo Soldiers Motorcycle Club, and, oh, Sergeant O'Brien and the Macomb County Sheriff. They also participated and helped out in the event. Kingdom Community Church, all the vendors and supporters, the City of Mount Clemens, and thank you Mayor Crop for the proclamation, and also Thomas Burns for cleaning and having the center ready for us for the day of the event. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I have two things I do want to say thank you to KE Electrical Supply for the investment that they are making in the City of Mount Clemens. That is a long-term thing, and it shows a long-term commitment. So thank you to them. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Wood. Two tree trimmers were working on the street last week, and it was early in the morning, and someone commented on that, but they were doing a great job. And I walked over and asked them if they could trim a tree in front of my house where there was a big dead limb. And in the process, I found out one of them recognized me as being a teacher, and he had graduated 12 years ago, and he said I looked the same. So I took that as a compliment. Anyways, they did a very good job, and I called Mr. Wood and told him that these two new employees, I call them kids, even though they're not really kids anymore, but they did a great job and they represent the city in a very positive way. So thank you to them and to the street departments for that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one more?
You can.
Also, thank you to our city clerk for coming out with the voter registration. I appreciate it.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
All right. I want, do you want to remind everyone that there are laws for what fireworks can be set off and when they can be? So it is one day before and after the holiday, right? Am I correct? Fourth of July, one day before, one day after?
I believe that correctly changed, it changed. State law changed, changed once, then they didn't like that, and it changed again about three, four years ago, reduced it.
Yeah. Because I thought it was a week before and a week after, and I think now, right, one day before and one day after is the legal time to ignite fireworks. So we welcome you to do that, but please be respectful of the people and animals that may be sensitive to that. It's also, of course, our noise ordinance is in effect as well, and the times for that. So I'd like to thank New Anthem Church. They replaced a lot of boards on our gazebo, and then they painted a lot of the gazebo, and it looks really great, and it's going to be fantastic for our concert series that's coming up. And so I really, and they also planted a lot of flowers in the flower bed and did a great job. They had what they called Love Week, and basically they're, they had a week of volunteerism in the city, and they did a lot of different little projects around the city. Some of them little and some of them not so little, obviously, but we really appreciate all of their efforts, and they're giving back to the community. Of course, I can't wait to attend the concert on the river and the fireworks on Friday, so make sure that you pay attention to the signs on the hill. You can only put your blankets on the west side of the hill because of keeping people away from the danger zone of where they set the fireworks off. And then also, please be mindful that we ask you not put blankets down until Friday. I'd like to congratulate Square One Pizza. I attended today their first anniversary ribbon cutting, and so they've, they've been in the city one year as of today. And so I'd like to congratulate Tim Allen and Pete Yaccabelli for their success. I think that there is quite a few crop members, crop boys in my household at least, who are now big fans of Square One Pizza. So I think that's a, a lot of our household, it's good pizza. I highly recommend the meatball. And with that, we will go ahead and, I'll request a motion for closed session.
Motion to enter in a closed session.
Support.
We will take a 10-minute recess and then return for closed session.
Motion to return from executive session.
Support.
We already did.
We did that.
We're already in.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, now you're waiting for this one?
But thank you, yeah.
Motion to approve the appointment of Greg Shipman as interim city manager in addition to his fire chief duties. An amendment to the contract will be signed and executed by the mayor and city clerk.
I'll second that.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Motion to adjourn.
We have to, we have to vote. Roll call, please.
His niece is a little odd.
Campbell?
It was a hustle.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Now?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.